You were in the hot seat, Bill. Were you really? Boy, that looks, uh, what apartment building is that? Is that there tonight?
No.
They're illegal.
Thanks, sir.
Right behind here?
This one's over. It's about five blocks.
Wow. Boy, you are getting after it now. That is something now. Police, were you police chief there?
Yeah.
I'm looking for all of them, too.
Your business will be easy.
Yeah. Hey, what are you doing in first thing, water or something? Does she know, man?
I told her.
Should I come in here with your mask on or?
I know what you're talking about. And they lost one for me to still have.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sure they'd like to hear it.
Yes, it's a good thing.
Hello, Houston.
Hello, Houston.
Pastor, good to see you.
Good to see you.
This is my second day. We have a problem.
Yeah.
Oh, we've had some.
We're here.
Except for Jeff.
Okay, Jeff.
Jeff's here.
Jeff, are you ready? He's not in his office. Isn't he? Hey, Jeff. You ready?
Did you get the text from?
Yes. Yep. Hi, Chris. Um, wow.
Yeah.
We just got through something pretty, pretty exciting, folks. Thank you all for waiting outside. We'll wait till Jeff gets in his office and then we'll get started. Dan Sullivan, thank you for coming all this way. I think we got word that Scott Flicko is coming on remotely and, uh, Ron McNair sent a message. He'll do that. We did move you all up to the first. Jeff?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Ready when you are. Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Kristina.
Present.
Mary Jean Creaker.
Present.
Mandy Magnus.
Present.
Linda DeWolfe.
Present.
Phil Mosmo.
Present.
Ethan Patrick.
Present.
Joe Williams.
Present.
Wayne Kuhn.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Pastor, would you pray, please?
Yes, would you stand with me for the prayer and then the pledge? God, thank you so much for this great city of Harrison that we live in. God, thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us. Thank you for the rain. God, just thank you for your grace over this city. God, give us wisdom. Uh, you've put us in these positions of leadership to, uh, to guide. And God, we ask for you to give us wisdom, uh, to represent the people and to do business and to do it with honor and integrity. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated, please. All right, uh, minutes of September 24th. Do we have a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Okay, we got one and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Let's move right into the partner reports. I think they are all remotely. Uh, Chief Grady? Are you with us, chief?
He's coming. He's actually going to be live. I heard his.
Okay, he's coming live. Hey.
There he is.
I see you brought your partners. Tom?
In crowd? Partners in crowd?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Some tough guys, all right.
Yeah. He knows they're masked up.
I've got him. Either way.
Thank you. You, you're up?
No. I stepped right over. All right. Let me get through this real quick. Um, of course, this is for September. Um, accidents worked, uh, 29. Year-to-date, 294. Same period last year, 268. Citations issued, 181. Uh, year-to-date, 1671. Last year, same period, 2741. Written warnings, 2487 for year-to-date and 5359. Of course, you can see that's still kind of low, uh, obviously because of 2020. We've not had as much activity. And again, our burglaries, residential and commercial, they're still down. Zero for the month, 15 for the year, 25 same period last year, three for the year on commercial, uh, 11 same period last year. Calls for service, 1,267. Uh, year-to-date, 12,204. Last year, same time, 17,449. Uh, next page is counseling, uh, with our school resource officers. They had 12 with students, six with parents or adults, and, uh, five with faculty. And, uh, some of the other things they've done is highlighted there. Next page, warrants division. Uh, we served 38 warrants September, in the month of September. Year-to-date, we've served 1,308. Uh, next page is animal control. Answered 94 calls September. Year-to-date, 772. Uh, go two pages over on the criminal, uh, investigation division. Uh, total offenses for the month of September is 35 worked. They closed 29. Year-to-date, 274 worked. They closed 190. Same period last year, 263 worked and they closed 262. And if you'll skip over two more pages. Uh, community engagement officer had 34 contacts with local businesses, 12 public safety announcements, uh, reached 2,500 people, uh, through, uh, her efforts. And, um, the last page is our narcotics report. In the month of September, we seized, uh, methamphetamine, marijuana, kratom, and pills. Uh, the, uh, weights were nine 3.3 grams of meth. Bobby? Is that 241 pounds that came out in marijuana? Last month? Yeah, it's 241. 241 and a half pounds of marijuana. Kratom was 8.8 milliliters and four pills. Total value of all drugs seized was 7,135. We had 11 misdemeanor and 10 felony arrests. Uh, total arrests was 29. Uh, we had one gun seized.
Carry on.
Thanks. Uh, $3,700 in cash received and then you can see the paraphernalia received. Does anybody have any questions about September's monthly report? All right. Many of you know we had a pretty sizable, uh, narcotics, uh, bust, raid last week. Uh, that was a com- combined effort between the, uh, Boone County Sheriff's Office, the Drug Task Force, and the Harrison Police Department. We, we actually used all three agencies. The, the three locations was just outside the city. All three of them was on there on 43, right? Yeah. Um, and, uh, we got some pictures here and... Bobby? Do you want to come up here? And, uh, I think most of y'all know, uh, Bobby Brayden. He's our Drug Task Force, uh, commander for this 14th Judicial District. Uh, his office along with Tim Robertson, and of course, we've got Roy Martin back here with the Sheriff's Office, uh, their officers, and then our special operations team and some of our narcotics officers, uh, made this arrest. And I've got a few pictures up here. If we go through them, I'll have Bobby kind of explain them to you. It's kind of an overall photo there of some of what we seized from those locations.
Yes.
Uh, as you can see, uh, quite a bit of processed suspected marijuana in those bags. The boxes contained, uh, was gummy type THC-containing candy. Basically edibles is what they're referred to, uh, on the medical marijuana circuit. Then there was a couple of vehicles, a Mustang, a Dodge Charger, and a Jeep. Few ATVs and a motorcycle seized also.
I think we've got more slides here.
So that is a close-up of the package that was in one of those boxes. There were several different kinds of those. There were approximately 1,211 bags that size containing those types of products. All of those contain, are suspected to contain THC. Those are sold at dispensaries in other states. Uh, in Arkansas, those cannot be sold in the state of Arkansas because they represent or mimic candy. And, and that's, you know, it can't be sold in Arkansas. California, Colorado, some other states that can, uh, and in fact, uh, can be purchased from a dispensary. And California, since it's recreational, any of us could go out there, walk in and buy a certain amount of that legally. Uh, what we worry about is, from the looks of it, you can see, you know, it says gummy worms on it. Where do we see gummy worms? We see them in the candy aisles at stores. Our kids have them. And so that's a, that's a worry or concern of ours is that small children would see those, mistake them for candy. Those are, uh, being found in our schools, have been found in the schools the last couple of years.
Maybe on the next slide? The TV station.
This is again, the, the items that were, the first picture you saw out in the parking lot, this is the same items, uh, indoors where you can see them a little bit better.
It's almost 300 pounds of marijuana. So you really didn't need the drug dog to sniff that out, did you?
No, no. We, as soon as we went through the door, we knew it was there. You could smell it.
I don't think we used the dog at all.
No. Again, here's another example of, uh, some of the items that were seized there. Uh, and again, it's, it's candy. It's, it's edibles and it contains the psychoactive ingredient THC that is in marijuana. That's, that's why people use marijuana is that ingredient there. And so it's, I understand the premise of why it's manufactured and sold because there are people that use medicinal marijuana that, you know, can't smoke it. I'm sure it's unhealthy to smoke anything. So they will use the edibles instead as a safer, uh, alternative. I use that term loosely.
But the bottom line, all of it can cause you to be impaired. You're driving a vehicle or anything else, it's just like taking alcohol or anything else in excess. I mean, you know, so. And it is still illegal in state of Arkansas as long as it's illegal, we're going to enforce it. So that's the bottom line. Uh, Sheriff Robinson and I both have officers. It's attached to Bobby's Task Force, the 14th Judicial District. And that right there is the reason why. They developed this estimation and went with it and, uh, we got a lot of stuff off the street that hopefully will stay out of our schools and away from our kids because I just tell you what, that, that candy stuff right there, kid gonna think it's candy?
Mm-hmm. What the kids do, they eat the whole bag when they find it.
These people, these dealers are pushing that on our kids, so. Like I said, I know, I know they said that, uh, Tim had said, they posted it on social media, there's a lot of people saying, well, why don't you arrest real criminals? Said, we are. He said, as long as it's illegal here, I said, we're going to do it. I said, I've seen as many things bad happen from somebody hollering marijuana as anything else.
Yes.
So. But anyway, I just wanted to share that with y'all. And like I said, Sheriff Robinson's here and Bobby Brayden. If y'all have any questions or anything, we're going to hopefully continue to, uh, to combat this, uh, narcotics issue and see if we can keep it running.
I personally appreciate all the law enforcement in this area taking this, uh, seriously. There are some members of the public like myself that, uh, I'm sure that, that's a large percentage of our population, but it needs to be said, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Good job.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Uh, Public Works, Wade Phillips?
Uh, yeah.
Hi, Wade.
Um, a few quick updates. Um, I'll start with the potential regulatory issues that I presented counsel on a couple weeks ago. Um, due to some language that was omitted from our current treatment permit, did the ADQ, we actually, uh, I guess we've gotten a little bit of a reprieve in that we are going to get to do at least one more round of bioharmour tree before we have to, uh, start taking a look at doing a toxicity deduction evaluation. So, uh, that's one of the reasons why there's not an item about this on the agenda tonight because we're, uh, we're going to do a little bit more monitoring, see what the results show, and then we'll just test more conversations with the ADQ or the EAT. Um, another item I wanted to touch on is we have, uh, our striking crew was able to come into town and so we're able to get quite a bit of striking done this week out on Industrial Park Road forward, a few other areas. And then also just want to let everybody know that we are planning on, um, doing our annual leaf pickup. It will start the week after Thanksgiving and we'll get the, uh, full schedule and everything out next week. And then hopefully we can get some info in the Harrison neighborhood about that, too, once we push that out. Uh, with that, um, also, last month I had presented, uh, you know, kind of our overall plan for Goblin Drive. Haven't received a lot of feedback. Uh, just kind of let you know where we are on that. We have, uh, sent info out about what we want to do to the various stakeholders that are involved with Baker Prairie. Um, kind of waiting back for comments, uh, from them. A chance to have some, you know, fairly serious conversations with them because there will be some encroachments on To The Prairie as a result of the construction. Uh, but also, I just wanted to see if, uh, you know, any council members or anybody had received any real input or had any comments as far as what the plan is for now.
Wade, I'll be glad to, uh, chime in. I have been wore out. Uh, and to be frank, I've been wore out by bus drivers. Yeah, on that road in the Harrison School District. And I can't speak for the district, but I can speak for the drivers. None of them are happy about the thought of three, uh, roundabouts, uh, particularly in the locations where they're not, they're not, they're not happy with roundabouts in the first place, but the drivers are not happy at all about three of them being in that small section, uh, between, from basically, I guess it's Pearl's Way all the way down to the lower entrance to the high school. So you can, you can take that for what it's worth. Uh, I told them I would bring that to you. Um, I understand that's what we're looking at, but there's not, there was not a single person that was happy about the fact of a roundabout.
Well, you know, they will be designed for vehicles larger than a bus. Uh, but, you know, as we move forward with that, I can, we can look at doing some turn simulations that show how, you know, that works for a bus, uh, to provide a little bit of information to the bus drivers. Uh, you know, there's not a whole lot of options, um, that we can do to keep traffic flowing, uh, reasonably well during those peak times in the morning and evening, you know. As I previously said, the, uh, you know, all the traffic modeling indicates roundabouts are by far the best option. Um, technically, traffic signals are not warranted, uh, based off of the traffic volumes out there as far as, uh, the delays that the signals would cause on Goblin versus allowing access on the drives in Pearl's Way. That doesn't mean that we can't put traffic signals there. So that's kind of why we, that's good information to have. That's why we put the info out there. We're just sort of taking our time until we get feedback. Um, probably at some point, uh, once I get done with the conversations, uh, dealing with Baker Prairie, uh, making sure that they are okay with those impacts, it'd probably be a good time to, well, I would say schedule a public hearing. Figure out a way to schedule some sort of, um, open public forum that is consistent with the way we have to do things these days, uh, to get a little bit more input from the broader public. There's always going to be resistance to roundabouts. Uh, there's just people that don't like them. Um, and then since we're looking at the first ones here in town, yeah, it, it'll be quite a bit of a, a change and a lot of getting used to compared to what we're, we normally deal with in town. Although I'm sure most people have, you know, if you travel to Northwest Arkansas, Branson, anywhere, pretty much any direction, you, you've had a chance to drive them and get at least a little bit of catch of tail.
Okay. Uh, anything else for Wade? Anything else, Wade?
That's all I've got.
Okay, great. Um, anything from the fire department? No?
Good evening. Uh, Chief Lowery is not able to be here today, so this is Deputy Fire Marshal Jeremy Sandsing giving the September report on his behalf.
Okay.
For the month of September, the Harrison Fire Department responded to 186 total calls for service. 140 of those were EMS calls. 10 of those calls was, uh, COVID-19 playing a factor. Uh, we responded to 15 motor vehicle collisions. Three of those, uh, responses were outside of the city limits. Our guys recorded 656 hours of training that were logged for the month of September. Again, with social distancing, that's kind of cut down on our training hours that we're receiving a month. The, uh, Community Risk Reduction Division addressed 16 property maintenance issues for the month of September. And then this week, we began training on our new system and our software, the BSNA Building Department and Business Licensing Software. That should make it easier for the, uh, contractors of the community to be able to receive permitting. And it allows our inspectors to track the processes of permitting and inspections throughout the community. And that is all I had.
Okay. Any questions for Jeremy? All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did much better than Mark. Thank you. We'll tell him. Luke? Finance? I feel like I hear him talking.
Not on, Luke.
There he is.
There he is.
Hey, Luke?
You're still muted.
Okay. You know, these things...
Hey, Luke, your mic's not working.
These things are good when they work, Charlie.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah. That's our, uh, new public safety building, everyone?
Yeah, look at that.
Uh-huh. It's coming along really good. Go ahead, Luke.
How's it going?
Here we go.
So I guess my mic wasn't working. Sorry about that. Um, other than sales tax, which we'll talk about in a little bit, uh, the main thing was just the CARES Act funding. I've been going to a lot of training for that and trying to get all the, the numbers and details down. We've got about $512,000, um, that we are allocated, so we're trying to get to that number. And I did find out some good news and I think we are going to be able to get to that number. It's just how we get it now. So, um, we're, we're doing some telework capabilities. The 25% that we normally get or don't get back from FEMA, we're able to get that through this CARES Act funding. And then some overtime hours that are used to supplement people that are gone due to COVID. And then finally, ultimately, it's, uh, any hours that are used that have changed purpose. So all of our firefighter EMTs, all the calls that they're going out to for COVID patients, our police officers, our patrol, whenever they have to deal with anybody in public, they don't know if they have COVID, so they have to take extra precautions. So those hours will eventually kind of fill in that $512,000. So that will be coming to the city. It's just how and, uh, how we're going to get that done is to be determined, but we started that process and love to answer any questions on that.
All right. Did you get sales tax in today?
I did. If you guys want to talk about that, we can kind of blow on to that. I know it's down, down below, but, um, good, good news, I guess, good and bad. Um, it wasn't way down, it wasn't way up. Uh, our city sales tax was above budget but lower than last year. So, um, good and bad, I guess, but we're still on pace to have a good year. Um, the county sales tax was up again over budget and last year, so, um, I hope the, the county is enjoying this success as well. And the inference from this is that the stimulus that began to run, run out had an effect on that sales tax. Um, I told Luke, you know, without hard numbers from any agency or any large economic group, it's hard to, uh, to determine that and quantify it, but it appears that that's what it is. And in his discussions with, uh, one of the larger local area businesses, that's what they're looking at as well. So some of that will come back in September as sales have increased at those businesses. So we're looking for a good September sales tax. Yeah, so that, that was August sales that we just received today. And, um, we should have September sales probably around Thanksgiving time. So I don't know what that does to the budget, but that's... We'll, we'll get to that one in the finance.
Yeah. Okay, Luke, any questions for Luke?
All right, I'll try to get my microphone working for next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to carry on now. If Deshaun Scarborough comes back up, I've asked him to stop in. I'd like to introduce him to all you folks. Uh, I think he's outside doing something with the media right now, but, uh, I may have to interrupt somebody if he comes in because I'm sure they want to get on the road. Uh, Chuck?
I'll make mine short tonight. I just wanted to give you an update on the Wonderwilla bathroom. We did, we were able to secure some block layers. They should be making a date to start in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we had to file for a little bit of an extension. We're waiting on the, um, stainless steel bathroom equipment. There's kind of a backorder on that because of COVID. So when we get that in, it'll be complete as soon as the blocks are up, we'll finish the roof and everything and by the end of the year, and then hopefully just wait on the bathroom equipment and put it in and we'll be ready to go. We just finished, uh, most of our volleyball and football leagues. We got one more night for flag football. And then we're doing basketball signups now, which start November and run through Christmas break. Um, and then the mayor actually got to come see pickleball live in person there or not. Since COVID, we've been able to open up our pickleball again and it had all four courts going the other night, so.
Did he play?
I don't know if he played.
Undefeated.
Undefeated. Undefeated, but, uh, that's what we got going on.
But I didn't play.
That's what we got going on right now and we were able to go ahead. Um, I called the health department. We were able to go ahead and put the basketball rims back up in the, in the park.
You know, that's interesting on the basketball rims because we had that question asked by students when we went to the high school last week. And we told them, we explained to them, it was, uh, I thought it was the governor's directive that they couldn't, but obviously not.
Indoor is a little bit more restrictive than outdoor. So we, as long as we have our sign, as long as we have our sign up, we're, we're, we're okay. So I just want to let, because we've been getting a lot of questions about that, so. But anyway, that's, uh, we're, we're getting close. I'm not going to say we're anywhere near back to normal, but we're getting a few more things than we were in March for sure, so, um, that's good.
All right, change, Chuck.
All right.
Thank you.
Short and sweet.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you. Is Shonda with us tonight?
Yes, sir.
Shonda?
Hello. Thank you for having me. I'm sorry, I'm multitasking at my daughter's soccer, jock and rock for soccer practice. Um, but mine will be short and sweet and I just wanted to update everyone and let you all know that the housing authority has a move, has moved to a new location, 813 North Main Street. Um, and it's right across from the area evac. and it's right across from the Area Evac Pad and Guild Mortgage. And we're excited to be there. We're still operating like we were before, where our doors are closed to the public. And, but you can get ahold of us via our phone, email, and come and ring the Ring Video Doorbell, and we'll work with you the best we can.
All right. Okay, Shonda, thank you. Well, we're moving along pretty good. We have a couple of things coming up that may not move quite as fast, but that's kind of the way it goes. Bill, before we get to you, I'd like to share that I just got a message from Jeff indicating we've got a lot of people on here tonight from Game and Fish. So if we could, after you do the resolution, if we could go ahead and let them on at that time?
I'm good.
Okay, good. Well, we'd like to turn it over to you right now, and then you can...
What I'd like to do here, and I'm really, I'm going to throw this out first of all so we can get it on the table for discussion, and I'll go ahead and make that motion that we make the motion to approve the resolution known as Restoring Freedom by Title.
Second.
The motion is second. Mr. Mayor, we got it on the table. You need to...
Okay.
Chris Head.
Chris Head. Bill Boswell made the motion, and Chris Head seconded it.
It's just an up or down to get it on the table.
I don't think they're asking, I mean, you've asked to put it forward so you can have the discussion, not that there can be a vote after the discussion.
All right. So, Chris, I'm going to let you kind of take this. You've got some guests here, I believe, that want to speak on behalf of the ordinance or on behalf of the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Introduce our guests and kind of lead us that way.
Yes, sir. Well, I was asked and tasked with bringing facts to the meeting tonight, and as I am not a scholar in the scheduling of the Arkansas House of Representatives, I felt best to invite Senator-elect Dan Sullivan to speak to us tonight and educate us about exactly what's going on. So, Senator-elect Dan Sullivan.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate our city councils. I go to a lot of our city council meetings, and y'all argue more over spending 50 bucks than we do spending 50 million down at the state level. So I sure appreciate what you do for your community. Folks, this all started, I'm a state representative in Jonesboro, and I had 10 or 12 local restaurants come to me when we were in Phase One. And the people in those restaurant owners said, "Dan, we're about to go out of business. We are, it's that critical, it's that bad, we can't operate at 33% capacity." So I met with our mayor, a couple of county judge, a couple of other people, and those people, and we all got together, and I said, "Well, guys, why don't you go forward and just make your concerns known?" And they said, "Dan, the county health department is so strict, and there is, we are worried about kickback if we do this, they'll be coming in and shut us down." So we can't say anything. So I said, "Good, I will take that forward to the governor's office." And I brought it forward to the governor's office and talked to some of his people a couple of times. When can we move to Phase Two? Because we're losing businesses. We had businesses closing. I'm sure you have here locally also. The end result was, I wrote an open letter to the governor saying that in Northeast Arkansas, we were moving to Phase Two, and he could join us or not join us. We had that conversation privately first, which is the right thing to do, and the restaurants and I together decided that they would move forward gradually into Phase Two. No revolution, no, we're not trying to go wild, but they would start gradually and safely moving into Phase Two. We said, "Governor, on Friday, we're going to do that." On Thursday, the governor moved the entire state of Arkansas to Phase Two because we were serious. People were losing their jobs, losing their businesses, their life investments. So after we moved to Phase Two, we still continued to struggle. Businesses are closing, and I can bring you a list. I did a FOIA request for the Commerce Department on the number of businesses that have closed. Your Department of Commerce does not know how many businesses have closed. Your Department of Commerce. So we went to the Department of Tourism, who had a better list. There are a lot of businesses really suffering greatly, people whose lives were invested in their businesses, were now closing. So I met with other legislators on what we can do. We contacted the governor's office multiple times and asked what we could do, and we were stuck there. You know, the governor declared an emergency, rightly so, that's in the Emergency Services Act. He declared that emergency, and no one contested that because none of us knew what the initial impact of COVID was. And we were all in a kind of a panic mode, what do we do next mode? The governor then extended that a second time, which by law he can, and that's what the law says. Where we come in disagreement was that law says, and my and several others' interpretation is that he can declare an emergency and he can extend the emergency. It doesn't say that he can extend it on and on and on. So how do you resolve that conflict when one side says, the legislative branch says you can extend it? The legislative branch says you can extend it, it says you can do it one time, or it just says extend, it doesn't provide for anything going forward. Well, a strict rendering of that would say you can do it and do it once. The governor said, "I think I have the power to do it as many times as I want." We had the attorney for the Health Department come in and spoke to our committee, and the attorney for the Health Department said that the governor, we said, "What are the bounds of the governor's power?" And she replied, "The governor's power is unbounded." The governor's power is unbounded. The next question, "How long does he have unbounded power?" The answer, "For as long as he wants." Folks, under the governor's reading of that, of the Department of Health attorney's reading of that, there's no limits to his power. There are no limits to how long he holds that power. Thus, we came about the lawsuit because I think it's, I think there are bounds to it. So we ended up in court with Judge Griffin in Pulaski County Court, and Judge Griffin dismissed the lawsuit, saying, agreeing with the governor, that essentially he can do it for as long as he wants. Well, we are now appealing that decision and going to the Arkansas Supreme Court because we, as a legislature, cannot give away the power that we do not have. You know, the, you all probably learned in fourth or fifth grade that there are three branches of government, and they are co-equal branches of government, and they call that checks and balances. Folks, we have given, the governor has assumed, and I think not according to our constitution, but the governor has assumed the ability to make law and the ability to enforce law. That should not be happening. You know, your police chief tonight, when he said, when he saw the law being broken, that he took the appropriate steps, and I think that's what I and other legislators have do. We don't think the governor has the authority, and we certainly can't give him the authority for an unbounded amount of time. That's unconstitutional. So that's what we, why we are taking it to the Supreme Court. Folks, that's all this is about. It's not personal. I have no vendetta against the governor. We actually agree on probably, I think there are somewhere between 40 and 70 directives, as he said. We probably agree on 80 or 90% of them. We probably have mild disagreement on probably 5 or 10%, and there may be a little bit more disagreement on two or three. And folks always say, "Well, what are those two or three?" Well, we've got 138 legislators. It's probably 138 different things that someone disagrees on, but that's what our representative part is. And my part, my point to you would be, tonight, your city council had to get permission from the governor to put up a basketball hoop. You had to get permission from the governor to put up a basketball hoop. Had a young lady who is, her dad called me, she is mentally handicapped, she's in a dance group, she loves the dance group, and they are going to have a recital. They had it two months out. And she would come home every day saying, "Dad, I'm going to have my recital when the governor says it's okay. I'm going to have my recital when the governor says it's okay." That's what this is about. It's about you as a city council because the Emergency Services Act actually suspends you. It says you have to call the governor to put up a basketball hoop. That's what it's about. So I think we want to return, all the lawsuit is about is returning representative democracy to our local government and our state government. Several hundred years ago, some guy said, "You can't do, what is it, no taxation without representation?" Well, now it's no putting up basketball hoops without representation. That's where we are. And I think it's unconstitutional. I think your local city council initially, in that first 60 days, yes, we needed authority, an authoritarian government. We did, I agree with that. We needed it probably in the next 30 days. After that, folks, it's time for you as a city council. You know, I trust my doctor more than I do the doctor in Little Rock. I trust my dentist more. I trust my local city council more than I do the legislators. No offense, Scott Flippo. I trust our local city councils and local government on local issues. I trust you to make the right decisions. You know, the people that have COVID, they're your neighbors. They're your friends. They're people that you go to school with and go to church with, and every one of you, just as I, took an oath to protect life, liberty, and prosperity. That means people's businesses, that means their health, that means their welfare. You took an oath to do that, and you didn't take an oath to the citizens, you took an oath to God. And whether or not you're accountable for, to your neighbors over fulfilling that oath is not nearly as important as your oath to God to fulfill that obligation. And I think, again, I trust you to do that. I don't want to spend too long. I think several of you have a question. One question, I'll get out of the way. There's no money tied to this. If the emergency ends, all that happens is Dr. Romero comes before the legislature and says, "Hey, guys, here are my directives, please pass them." And he can do that in one day. We may have some debate over some of those, but that's called representative government. And I think we're far along enough now, what, eight months in, that some of these things ought to come back to your local government. We don't have to dump the pile on you, but we ought to start moving in that direction where you can decide whether or not you want to put up a basketball hoop. I think, I don't know who it was, your city CFO, I don't know what your position is called, but talked about the money you get, the CARES Act money. Folks, that's, you got that. There's no, it's not tied to the emergency. If the president and the Congress decides on another emergency CARES Act money, you get the money. It's not tied to this emergency. If it is, and if I'm wrong, I'll stand corrected, but I've never had anybody tell me that that money was tied in any way to what you have. I'll be glad to answer any questions and appreciate the opportunity to speak.
My name is Mitch Fagnus, Mr. Sullivan. The, I also serve on the Harrison School Board, and we've been told that the CARES funding is dependent on the emergency. And I don't, again, I'm not smart enough to figure that out myself without an attorney or legislative or a representative in the government telling me that, but that's what we've been told in board meetings.
Somebody had to show me that because I'm not aware of it, because we're handing out money right now. And as you know, and I've had numerous calls from school board members, superintendents, parents who are, feel like their hands are tied, and I feel like your school board is capable of making some of these decisions without calling the governor's office to get permission.
Right. And then the question I would have, so are you wanting the, his emergency declaration to end, or do you want to limit the... I'm a little bit confused about what the ultimate goal of this is. Before the Supreme Court, what is that that is before the Supreme Court?
Oh, really?
That he can extend that on multiple times?
Right.
Or that he can just have, I guess, would it be a change in an idea of the spirit of the law? So I guess what I'm asking, what is this suit about?
The suit asked the Secretary of Health to come before the legislature to promulgate his rules. If we win and we prevail in this, all that happens, you know, people, the elephant in the room is masks. Do masks go away? Do social distancing go away? That's up to the Secretary of Health and legislature to debate that and talk about that. I would think that none of those change because all we're asking for is a return to representative government. So, you know, and I heard the gentleman right here talk about the roundabouts, and you're going to discuss the roundabouts. Folks, under an Emergency Services Act, if this were health-related, you couldn't discuss that. You wouldn't have a vote on whether we're going to have roundabouts or not. We would, all we could talk about, or we couldn't even discuss it. You know, we are your representatives to Little Rock, and if we can't carry that message down and have a debate over whether this is appropriate or not, we can't do it.
So, again, I'm trying to get a complete clarification. So is whether or not the governor can mandate these things during an emergency or for an extended amount of time?
For extended amount of time. He absolutely has the authority under emergency. He can absolutely...
As we started, in regard to masks, he says this needs to be the decision of the governor and the state as opposed to individual communities or counties. He didn't, he didn't say that, not putting words in your mouth, that that power would extend indefinitely.
Under an emergency, the governor has, as the attorney said, has all power. The governor could essentially declare that there's a fiscal emergency and raise your taxes. That's the amount of pie, it's unbounded. And the lawsuit says that he can't perpetually, for eternity, or into the next governor's race, into the next governor, whoever that might be, extend that power to the next governor. Now, if this happens, if we prevail, the governor could declare a new emergency in 10 days and extend that one, and maybe another one in 10 days more. But I think constitutionally, you know, I think he's wrong constitutionally when he says he can declare it and do extensions endlessly.
Let me ask you a couple of questions, and I'm not a constitutional expert, obviously, not a slave of Arkansas. One of the concerns is, by listening to you, is the power of the doctor more so, because the question is, you're suing, you're suing the governor, you're suing them to get...
Well, that's not quite accurate. We're not suing really anybody. We are asking for declaratory judgment against the Secretary of Health. That's what the suit says.
That, got it, okay. But it's against the Secretary of Health, but if the governor comes back and says we're going to continue on with this, not the Secretary of Health, what's the difference? That's my question. The governor has that authority, right? That's what he said.
Sure. And he passed that authority off to the, the decision on that authority off to the Secretary of Health.
By writing or by word?
By writing.
Okay. So he could by writing take that back just as quick?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay. And I'm not being argumentative, I'm just trying to...
No, sure, I appreciate it.
Because what he's done is, is he's helped, he's handed it off to the expert, or what they feel is the expert, in that area to make those calls as to whether it needs to be masks or, you know, social distancing or whatever. But he could go back, Secretary Hough could go back to being nothing more than a advisor to the governor and says, "This is what you should do." The governor says, stroke of the pen, I take all the power back, this is what we're going to do.
Yes. My understanding, again, I'm not an attorney either, but you know, the, I met with a doctor from NYIT yesterday after our city council, that's our doctor's school at ASU, and he's an expert. And in immunology, I guess is the word, he's an expert in it. And he was talking to me, and when we finished talking, I said, "You know, what you're telling me, I believe, but if you and I went to Little Rock and you testified, the governor's already declared he does, he only trusts his people. He only trusts his doctor. He only trusts the doctors that advise him."
That's what our entire country's in though right now, is we're split. We don't know which side to trust. I mean, that's bottom line, that's what it is. On this COVID situation, we don't know, we don't know which one to trust. Do we trust the president? Do we trust the president, the vice president? Do we trust Dr. Fauci? Do we trust, who do we trust in this? So there's no difference.
Well, I've got an answer. I've got an answer to that. You have to decide, you know, you as a city council need to decide who you trust. And at some point, you can, as an elected body, elected by the people who are coming to you and having these reports and saying, "This is what we want to do. This is what's best for our community." This is what's best for our, our community. And then you as a city council say, who do we trust? And you have a voice in that. Right now, you have no voice. You have no voice through your senator. You have no voice through your, through your representatives. You have no voice as a city council. And it's time that we say, governor, Secretary of Health, we want our voice back. We want to decide if we, we think we're wise enough to put up basketball goals in our community. That's what this is about. For you, you, you make that decision. And I didn't mean to interrupt, but-
No, that's fine.
Go ahead.
Are you, Dan, are you already, you're a senator-elect, is that correct?
Correct.
You're just getting sworn in January one? My, I guess my question would be, is, as I think about all these things, then the General Assembly comes back into session in the spring?
No, um, January nineteenth.
Okay. And that's not a finance general assembly, that's a full-blown general assembly, correct?
Correct.
So are you going to come, or somebody on the House side going to come with recommendations for limitations to the power of the governor over the length of time that he can create an emergency?
Yes. Yes, there's already at least one bill, there's liable to be two. But I'm not convinced they'll pass. You know, if our governor's willing to go to the Supreme Court to keep perpetual power, perpetual power to the nth degree with no limits, if our governor's willing to go to the Supreme Court, then I'm, I would be, not be surprised and would fully expect him to want to keep that power through his, his full administration. And folks, all it takes, you have, you operate with a quorum, right? And a couple of people get out and walk out of the room, there's no quorum, there's no vote. And all it takes, you've seen it happen legislatively, a couple of people get up, walk out of the room, a couple of people answer a phone call and step out of the room, there's no longer a quorum and the vote goes away. You know, we had a bill last session that eighty house members signed to raise the, I guess lowered the tax on a taxable income on a car. If you bought a car, I think it was four thousand dollars, now you have to pay taxes on it. We tried to raise that to seventy-five hundred, which would help the poorest people in our state. Eighty cosigners on that bill, when it ended up failing because people walked out of the room and the vote came. That was a big deal. And I think the same thing is potentially can happen on a bill like this. So the fact that we have legislation is a good thing, whether it will pass, you know, it's our way, we'll actually debate and discuss that, which we can't do under the current circumstance.
Anything else, Mr. Sullivan?
Nope. Yeah, again, I, I have tremendous respect for your local city council. I've seen them make decisions that change cities and counties of all sizes. And I think to, to pull away that authority from you is a big deal. And to pu- pull it away perpetually is a bigger deal. And to pull it away with no bounds, there ought to be a very high threshold before that happens. I appreciate your consideration, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Bill, I've got one more guest that would like to speak. Bobby Long from Jonesboro, if they'd like to speak tonight.
All right. Hello, my name is Bobby Long. And I'm on Jonesboro City Council, and I'm the author of the resolution that's before you, so I can tell you exactly what it is and what it is not. First of all, I want to say that when you guys were approving your minutes, I seconded it and I voted for it. I mean, I'm, I'm used to sitting right there. So I found my, I found myself voting for, for the, the record there, so it's, it's, did you not say I?
I felt the way the room just kind of-
Yeah.
I'll note that in the next minute.
Yeah, note that in the next minute, that, that, uh-
If he's included.
Yeah, had people included there. But first of all, I want to commend you for, first of all, engaging in discussion. What an awesome thing that we have here, is our right to engage in discussion. And for each one of you sitting in that chair, just like I sit in the chair in Jonesboro, I represent the voice of the people that put me in that chair. And I take that so unbelievably serious. And that's what I do. Sometimes I stand alone. A lot of times I stand alone. But that's okay, because that's what they put me in that chair to do, is to be their voice. And I'm happy to be that voice. And I also want to let you know that my wife and I, we have been in your city for, gosh, I guess, about lunchtime. And you have an unbelievable city. Your people are so friendly and so nice and kind. We went to the Dollar General, to the Aldi store, ate lunch here, and they were unbelievably nice. So I just want to commend you and your citizens on the jewel that you have right here. So I appreciate that. I also want to let you know that we also struggle with roundabouts. Okay? So, we do. This is a struggle that I think every city has had. So yes, we do struggle with those. We have implemented one right by school, and I think right now, there has been no accidents in the roundabout. There have been tire tracks through the grass of people hopping over the roundabout. You know, but as far as accidents, no accidents. But what we're here to do is to talk about this resolution. And as Senator-elect Sullivan has stated before, what it does is it returns to a representative form of government. When I was interviewed from, with K8 yesterday, last night, after the council meeting, and the discussion did not happen at our council. And that was a travesty because the voice of a lot of people were not heard. And I want to commend you for at least having that discussion. But they asked if this was over, are you going to give up? And I said with a resounding voice, no, no. If there is anything worth fighting for, first of all, it's our faith. Second of all, it's the voice of a representative government that has played a part in making this the greatest country on the face of the planet for the last two hundred years. It is worth it, and I will not give up. Because that's what we're here, what is the alternative to a representative government? Ask yourself, what's the alternative? You know, it's, it's fitting that we're having this conversation at this point, because what are we in the midst of doing right now? We're in the midst of voting. Voting for not only elected officials, for the President of the United States, senators, representatives, things like that. Why do you vote? You see, voting is not the end. Voting is a means to an end. And that purpose is so that we can put people of our own morals, vision, and values in places of decision-making positions to where they can carry our voice and be a part. That's what it's all about. That's what your vote is about. And when a part of one branch of government denies that voice, what you're doing is devaluing and undermining one of the very crucial parts of our democracy is representation. Why do you sit in the chair that you sit in? Why are you there? What is your purpose? I can tell you, my purpose is to be that voice. I've watched your mayor, and he, he depends on, not just likes it, but he depends on your wisdom and what you bring to the table. And decisions that you make as a council are better than the decisions, and I think, and he would agree with this, on the decisions that he would make or could make on his own. See, leadership values scrutiny. Leadership values the ideal of a plurality of wisdom. And I refuse to accept the proposition that the wisdom of one man is better than the plurality of wisdom of our state legislatures. Not only do I reject that proposition, but it's not the way our government was supposed to operate. Now, all this, all this resolution does is it says, first of all, it's a celebration of your city. It says that our businesses are tenacious in the way that they have been able to come through this. They have been able to do things and to have to adjust, on the fly sometimes, just to exist. And they have done a great job with it. It also celebrates the wisdom that your citizens have in placing you in the positions that you have right now. Because if they didn't want you making those decisions, they would have not voted for you. See, their vote's important. You represent the voice of every single person of Harrison, and that is an awesome responsibility. But it's one that right now, you don't have. Do you realize, Jonesboro, when we had the ordinance come through, let's just give an example, the mask ordinance, okay? On July third, the day before our Independence Day, our governor set out an executive order that says that, you know, you have the ability to mandate this or not, okay? We heard from our citizens, my phone blew up, text blew up, email blew up, everything blew up, okay? I heard from the people, we were set and poised to pass a resolution that did not look like that, but it was a resolution that our people wanted, okay? July sixteenth, the mandate come down. At that point, every citizen's voice, every email, every text, every phone call was silenced. Their voice no longer mattered. My voice no longer mattered. Whether you agreed with it or not, it didn't matter, because we were overrun. Therefore, the governor said that what I feel is best for your city is better than what you feel is best for your city, although you're on the ground, we're on the ground doing that. So that's what it did. And also, these executive orders, you know, when you said that power was handed over to the Secretary of Health, okay? These executive orders carry the full weight of law. A violation of those executive orders can mean fines up to five hundred dollars, a misdemeanor, and a year in prison. Each one of those executive orders delegates to the Secretary of Health full power over quarantine, isolation, and commerce. What that means is that the Secretary of Health could come in and shut down every single business in Harrison if he wanted to. Think about that. Where would your people go to voice their opposition to that? Would you call your senator? Would you call your representative? Would they call you? What would you have to say at that point? There's nothing I can do. This has got to end. We have got to return to a representative form of government to where we have a voice. And here's the thing, you can be for this resolution, you can be against it, but right now, it doesn't matter. You know, right now, it doesn't matter, because whether you're for it or against it, doesn't matter. Your voice really doesn't count. I want your voice to count. I was so happy when I heard that you guys were taking up this, because you know what? This is the first time that you've ever had to, that you've had to sound off on this issue in a long time. So please, you guys have a golden opportunity to stand for freedom, to stand for liberty, and to stand for the people that put you in that chair and said that we respect your voice, we respect your vote.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
And I want to, I want to dovetail on that a little bit, and I wouldn't do this without explicit permission, which was given to me today, because you know, I don't like to name names. But I was specifically asked by the owner of the poorhouse on the square, Jean Cochran, told me to use her name and make her voice heard here tonight. She said, Chris, you do everything you can to get this done, because I'm hurting. My business is hurting. These restrictions are unfair, they're not even-handed restrictions, and her business is suffering. And I want you to think about that tonight.
Okay. Bill, I know we have Senator Flippo on the-
Is Senator Flippo-
Senator Flippo.
I'm here, I'm here. Scott, are you out there somewhere? Uh, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Fire away. What you feeling?
I, uh, well, I was just hearing Senator-elect Sullivan attacks and tells him to stay in the thick of Boone County, stealing my thunder. So, first of all, I think Dan, I'm going to call him just Dan, Dan makes some very valid points. You know, I think it's very important in a time of crisis and uncertainty, you know, to really get pause and consideration to actions, decisions that are being made from the president, that it does suck. So when the Emergency Services Act came into being in nineteen seventy-three, you know, nobody was foreseeing a scenario like we're dealing with today with COVID. I mean, I don't know, I don't think anybody in this meeting was around the Spanish flu, which could be the next, you know, closest thing to a good crisis. So a typical emergency would be a tornado in the county, or a few, kind of, an ice storm. The emergency declaration would be good for a few days or a few weeks. And now you have something that's, you know, there is no wind in sight. And it's across the board in all seventy-five counties. Not letting go of a representative policy is apparently a good idea in my opinion. However, that being said, is, you know, from an elected standpoint, what nobody wants to do is shoulder the burden of the responsibility of making decisions on their own. There's a hundred thirty-five legislators with one governor, you know, and so these are not easy decisions that he is, you know, that he is making. Nor does, you know, I, I, I talk to the governor, you know, fairly regularly, and he doesn't look above. He understands that businesses are struggling. I've had some disagreements with him, and I'm not going to go on all this here right now, but I do respect and understand that, you know, he's got the full decisions to make, and that when he refused to issue a state home war back in April, you know, conservatives were really applauding him. I mean, even constituents of mine that were, you know, not huge fans of the governor were very proud of him for doing that. And, you know, he, people tell me regularly, he goes, you know, I'm going off the same permission, the same data that, you know, kind of governed that decision is the same one that's getting into this decision. And, you know, we agree that our governors have set up our branch of government to sometimes be at odds with each other. You know, by the chief executive, you know, the, the, you know, the governor and president, then doesn't want to find a way to circumvent the pesky legislature, the pesky Congress to get things done. That is not unique to Arkansas, it's not unique to this governor. However, you know, what we're dealing with is, Asa will be the governor forever. COVID won't be, always be the emergency of the day or the emergency of the year. And so, you know, I know Dan and others have some skepticism on whether you'll see legislation that's going to be coming out, you know, in January next year when we go to our general session. I feel very confident you will see legislation run to address these emergency powers. Exactly what that looks like, that's still kind of a work in progress. I want to work with the sponsors on that to see something, you know, to see something pass, because I think it isn't worked. One thing that we have to be careful of is that, like Dan and Mitch and many of you, I'm not a constitutional scholar or an attorney, although I do, I can probably give Mitch Magnus a run for his money. Joking, Mitch, I'm your buddy.
And you could give me a run, that's for sure.
But we've got, you know, the waivers for telehealth and telemedicine. COVID immunity for businesses, which I spent a great deal of time working on earlier this summer, when it was looking like we might have a special session. Virtual learning for schools allows them to, you know, to provide virtual learning and still get, you know, you know, paid, or get funding for those students. You know, it could be a risk with any emergency declaration. So the first thing out of the gate that we're going to legislature need to address is, that's Dan, just, we're there is broad agreement on some of these executive orders. Let's get that into legislation and put that into law, so they're not, they're no longer the issues that are going to be on the table. You know, secondly, is, you know, I think the governor does need a degree of flexibility, but from the legislative perspective, you know, we are a co-weaker branch of government. And, you know, I don't like the idea of anybody having the unilateral power, authority to, you know, extend it to state emergency indefinitely. And so, you know, that's where I think we're going to get down into the weeds. But, you know, I do think it's important that COVID is fluid. I mean, first of all, Mr. Paulswell, you said, you know, nobody knows who to believe in. You know, do you believe the president, Fauci, the governor? You know, you already know to dismiss your state's signature with a somewhat of a grain of salt when he starts talking about offenses. But the, you know, the reality is, is that, you know, this is a real disease. And it can have, you know, it's having an effect on a broad number of people, on, across the board, with all of our businesses, schools. And so, it's serious. And, but at the same time, this is not going to be around forever. We will get past it. Our government is going to be much more sustainable than COVID. And not losing sight of that, but not throwing the baby out with a bathwater. You know, I would tell, I might share this with you all, I've always felt that, you know, the best way to handle this was not through the courts and leave it up to the interpretation of, of the judicial branch, because the legislature already has the ability to, to change that law, the Emergency Services Act. We can, we can, you know, we can make amendments to it, we can scratch it, start, start anew, but we already have that authority. We will be going into our session, the governor doesn't have the ability to give our emergency powers, you know, to cancel our session or delay our session. you know, to cancel our session or delay our session. And so, you know, that's kind of set out and defined by our constitution. And so, you know, I think that with all the talk that's been taking place with most of our colleagues in legislature, growing frustration, because we feel like we've been somewhat mitigated because we're taking phone calls, just like you all as council members, as Mayor Jackson is, from constituents that have aggravations or complaints. And we're not in a position to say, well, we can, we can help change that, or we can do anything. And so, it's, it is frustrating. But, you know, the point is, is that I don't like the way that this gets framed as far as, you know, it's somebody, it's legislature against the governor, or Dan against the governor. I mean, this is citizens, you know, working together for the betterment of our communities and our state. There's going to be disagreements. That's inevitable. But at the same time, is, you know, how we process that and making sure that we're making decisions that are going to be in the best interest of our constituents? Nobody's gonna agree with every, you know, step or decision that's going to be made. I wasn't a big fan of the mask ordinance, but I'm also not a big fan of people, you know, showing their backside at a small business because, you know, the owner asks them to wear masks and to go inside. I believe individuals have the right to make their own decisions. What they don't have the right to do is to make somebody else's decision for them. And that we ought to be respectful for, especially our small businesses that are just trying to stay in business and not go off and try to make their lives any more difficult. But with the, I don't want to go down a rabbit trail, but with the context of addressing this, I do feel that addressing the emergency powers with legislation in January is the best venue. There's always a possibility that it doesn't make it out of committee or that members of the committee will just not show up today the bill's being run. You know what? We're gonna be better than that. And there's, you know, there's no guarantee that a judge is going to rule or spring a court will rule favorably either. There's an inherent risk. But I guarantee you one thing, inaction will always get you more of the same. And for people that don't have a problem and think that, you know, they're fine with every decision that's been made thus far by the governor, there's a good chance that there's gonna be a governor down the road that you might not be in agreement with. And that if he declares an emergency and starts operating under broad legislative powers, unilateral, where does that take us then? And so I think these are important discussions, and this is your republic at work right now because meetings like this and discussions like this. But I do caution people to, you know, to not let your emotions and your aggravations, you know, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. If you're a small business and you have been shut down by government or your operations have been restricted, and you have got your livelihood on the line, yeah, it's very, very personal. And I still don't know, you know, to tell people. I've got restaurants in Mount Home. They tell me, Scott, even if the governor let us go to 100% capacity, we can't even, you know, we're not even, you know, you know, filling in at 60% because people just don't want to come in. Because we're scared. And so I think the biggest thing that we all as elected officials, and I'll hit in on this, is we have a responsibility to work to, you know, to obtain credibility with our constituents. People don't have a lot of faith and trust or confidence in their government. It's been abused over time. We have responsibilities to do what we can to try to restore that. That's not always the priority. But that's making sure that, 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 that we're aware of the facts and we're aware of the issues and the circumstances on the ground in our communities and that we do our best to just flat out level with them. Because people don't always expect to like or agree with what you're gonna tell them. They just don't expect you to pee on their leg until they're in a shrink. And that's reasonable, folks. Very, very reasonable. And with that, I want to thank Senator Sullivan for driving three and a half hours to make it there tonight. Much appreciated, Dan. Mitch, I was joking with you. You are obviously much smarter than I am. If you write anybody ticket for not wearing a mask...
Scott, don't give you too much credit. Don't give you too much credit.
All right, Senator Flippo, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. I'm not sure what he said, but he said it well. He said it well, and you politicians or something else.
Mayor, I think we're, I think we're at the point of the discussion, I think, that we've heard of great representation and a good cross-section of discussion in regards to the matter. I think we're at a position where he could call for the question.
I'd like to make a couple of comments.
I'd like to go ahead and vote.
Okay.
I've called for the question, I'd like to go ahead and vote.
Well, do we have anybody else who wants to comment?
You can't do that once I call for the question. Robert Rule of Order is, that's, that's what's gotta happen next.
Well, okay.
I mean, we beat it, we beat it, and we beat it, and we discussed it.
Bill, I'm not sure we have. We listened to three people, and three people indicated they kind of want to vote for this. We probably have several people that want to talk that might be against it. We had one man talk about businesses being hurt. We got Bob Ward.
Mayor, I'd make you disagree. We've got a call for a question on the table.
Okay, roll call, please. Jeff, you with us? Hey, Jeff?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Am I, am I mistaken that there needs to be a vote on the call for the question?
No.
I got one person saying yes, and one person saying no. I'm gonna flip to my attorney.
I don't know the answer to that question.
And he don't know. So...
No, once the question's called, it doesn't, it doesn't require a secondary thing.
Okay. Roll call?
Mayor Gene Crigger?
No.
Mitch Magnus?
No.
Bill Boswell?
No.
Oh, Ms. Linda Wall?
Linda?
She's muted.
Hey, come on now. If you want to vote on this.
No, you hear me?
There we got you.
Okay.
Peter Patrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
No.
Wayne Coon?
Yes.
Chris Hinn?
Yes.
I agree most of the fails.
Now, Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, I, if you're allowed, yeah.
Well, I mean, if, if you're meeting at that point, he can call for the question.
Sure.
My, my concern in my vote is based on the fact, I don't want to sound inconstitable because the community was hospitable to you, and I think we're the most hospitable place on the planet Earth.
Of course.
And I hope you come back tomorrow. I have, I've heard from individuals from that part of the state. I'm a city council member in Harrison, Arkansas, and I haven't heard from my constituents. So when you say you want to hear we're the voice of the people, I want to hear that voice in my ear and some, the, the calls that I've received thus far don't allow me to make a decision at this point.
You weren't usually the one that's heard from the people, the most, it seems.
The most. I, I, I will say that I have even elicited comments on this, and I haven't had enough to make a decision.
I'll be darned them.
So I, I, while I have concerns, I think there are remedies to the incredibly wise Scott Flippo as to, there's remedies in the legislature that have come to effect.
Sure.
But my point, I don't have enough information.
And I would dovetail that. In morally voting in regards to the resolution, I would dovetail what you said because of what Dan has shared with us and what also our fellow council member from Jonesboro is. We want to hear from the people, but at the same time, the responsibility of what we're looking at is not only ours, but also the Arkansas Legislature needs to look at making some changes in the Governor's Emergency Power Act from 1973. And at that time, when they make changes to those powers, I mean, I hate to say it, other than we take a stance, there's no weight to this resolution. We're not telling the state legislature to do anything. They're not in session. I'm not gonna go any farther on it. I appreciate all the work that's been done. I particularly appreciate what Chris has done because he's passionate about it. And that's what counts. And sometimes we get lost in that is that the passion of being a representative for the people gets lost in the shuffle. And I appreciate that very much, Chris. I appreciate what you did regardless. Right or wrong, I always tell people, I'm one vote. I'm one vote. And, and I stand by that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So if it's okay, we can jump in with the game and fish. Sure, you okay with that? Yeah, hey, thank you all. Drive careful, drive them back tonight.
I really appreciate what you said. You represent your people.
Yeah, thank you, ladies.
Big, big, big deal.
Thank you.
You bet.
Let's see, who do we got on here? Wade, would you want to take it away with Game and Fish, please? I know they've been waiting and...
And you are muted.
I, who is muted?
Game and Fish is muted. I can see a picture up there.
Okay, we'll get Wade.
Yeah, I'll get us started here. We thought, you know, kind of, as we've been moving through some of the design on this preliminary look at, you know, the idea of taking the weir out, we thought that would be a good time just to, you know, get a little bit of update from some of the project team. So tonight with us, I know we've got Sean Saunders and Darrell Bowman with Game and Fish, John Chapman, who's been involved with this project in the beginning, when the Nature Conservancy was involved, and he's, he's kind of remained involved in the project. And then also Josh Allen with SWCA, who is the group that's doing quite a bit of the hydrology and hydraulic design that would be involved with this. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Sean and let him get started with their update.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for letting us come and talk and give you an update. I'm gonna be short, and I'll pass this over to John, and he can give an update on the design plan. And then Darrell's gonna, Darrell Bowman's gonna give a brief description on the pros and cons and the negative of having an impoundment and turning it back into a free flowing stream. The, I just wanted to reiterate that the Game and Fish has been working hard on this project. I've been working with John. We've been in discussions weekly about this. And I've been in contact with different native seed suppliers. And I've also been looking at other partners to help with this project to make this go smoother if the City Council passes it and moves forward. So Game and Fish has been working hard on this, and we've been, obviously, we've been staying busy. But I'll pass this over to John, and he can give the council an update on where everything's at with the design.
Thanks, Sean, and thank you, Council, for having us here. I am unmuted, right?
That's true.
It is true. Yeah. So, so this is gonna be pretty brief, but Josh is on the call with us. He's our engineer from SWCA, and he's here just if you have any questions. But we've been working with Game and Fish and Wade, and, and we're getting really close to having a design ready for you guys. We plan on getting a draft out to Game and Fish and Wade for review next week. There's been a lot of moving parts to get together. The highway department is, they're putting a new bridge in over the lake, so we've been coordinating with them on that. There has been, there's just a lot of different components to it. We've been optimizing the design to try to make sure we save the most cost that we can on it. And, yeah, we're really looking forward to presenting that in a future meeting when you guys have a chance to review it and sort of get, get something in front of you to look at and some numbers because that's gonna be the next step. So, thanks for having me.
All right. Wade?
Okay, um, let's see, Darrell, did you have, were you wanting to...
Hi, y'all, good to see you again. I am sitting in Little Rock, but I hope I'm not, that I was evil. It's good to talk to y'all. I wish I could be there in person. Like Sean said, we just, and John, we appreciate the opportunity to say hi again and give you an update. I was just here because of the mayor and Wade and some of you had the typical input from constituents about the summertime status of the lake, when the water's low. And I'm just here to answer any questions about that condition or anything else. I don't have a presentation. You have, I was listening to people talk.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons we have them here tonight, I think they were about ready to come in with a report anyway. But I have received numerous calls about the lake being stagnant. And down in one area closer to the weir, it's very stagnant, smells bad.
Smells really bad.
You know, not a good thing. You know, not a good thing. So, um, so I reached out to Wade and, uh, find out kind of where we are on here. And he kind of thought it'd be a good idea to bring them in and kind of give you all a report. But I'm glad to hear we're only a, a little while away from the design, maybe, uh, a couple of weeks. I don't know.
Right, yeah.
Good, that'd be wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, when we started this, uh, discussion months, years ago, however long it's been, we, uh, we said there would probably be some sort of public hearings. Is there any intention?
Absolutely, absolutely. Before we do anything, I mean, we, we've already approved to go through, uh, with the thirty percent design. And I think when we get that, then we'll have something to start the public hearings, start more discussion. But, uh, it was good, good to get an update.
Because one of the things that I hear from the voters when I'm in the public, they will say they're either for or against it, but every single one is qualified that by saying, but I don't really know what's coming.
Sure, sure. And that's good. We don't either. Uh, guys, if we were to remove that weir, would, uh, the stagnant water that I'm referring to, would that be gone? I'm assuming it would, but I'm not an expert.
Yeah, Mayor, that's, that's what you've, uh, talked about and that's what I can address. Um, and the answer is yes. And, and all you have to do, everybody there and listening has common sense. And all you have to do to look at the situation is go look at the lake right now, upstream of the weir, and then go upstream above the lake and look at the flowing stream, or go downstream and look at the flowing stream. And you do not see the stagnant water condition. It is simply created by that weir. It's a low head dam in our terminology. Um, and it, it slows down and stops the stream processes that allow the stream to process nutrients, moving sediment and so forth. That weir stops those processes and engages other processes that let algal growth go out of control. And it gives them the, the insect life that, uh, is stymied by the stagnated water. The insects that graze on the algae aren't there anymore, uh, in the non-flowing condition. The algae goes out of control. It, it, there's so much goes on. It all of its amounts to is because that river is stopped up by that dam, strapping supplements, strapping nutrients and creating, uh, an artificial, uh, condition that's just not in them tables. But the numbers to it, this, this is really interesting. To give you an idea, a properly built and designed lake in the Ozarks, um, such as either Game and Fish lakes or, uh, the Corvino engineer lakes, or the lakes I used to manage in middle of Arkansas, there's something, the watershed to lake ratio that, that engineers consider in building lake for purposes such as, uh, in water or recreation. And that, that means for every surface water of the lake, how many, uh, areas of land does it drain? It's a, it's a ratio that you can measure. Particularly for the Guddozark Lake, you're in the range of around, on the average, two hundred acres of land drain every one surface acre of the lake. Or, for every area of the lake is drained about two hundred acres of land upstream. It, to give you the numbers that, that, that maybe will kind of bring this home, your lake, uh, is draining forty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-four acres and it's a twelve acre lake. And that comes up to three thousand eight hundred and nineteen acres of watershed that are being drained by every one acre of lake. They can't do it. It's just an improperly sized body of water for that huge watershed upstream. So just by slowing it down with that relatively small dam, it's just enough to create a poor water quality condition. And it's just gonna always be that way.
Would, would roundabouts help?
Good one, Mitch. Hey, that's great information, Darrell. Uh, I, I assume you folks kind of share the excitement that we do about Mill Creek and Dog Creek? About new ownership in that area?
Yeah, we've, uh, we've actually been engaged with, uh, Johnny Morris and his, uh, his writing man, Bob Zimer, uh, since before it was announced, they, uh, had to acquire that property because they're, or in the possibility of what they can do with the, maybe the old trout hatchery and all that. We, we don't know what their, uh, what their plans are, but we have been engaged in answering their questions and trying to help them with their decision making. And there's a lot at stake here because the, the city of Marble has real problems with their treatment facility.
Right.
Marble Falls, isn't it? Um, and there's a, there's a state committee created by the governor that's trying to help that watershed. There's money into that committee and, uh, uh, what, uh, Mr. Morris decides to do from that watershed is, uh, is really, uh, important to what happens with funding, Marble Falls, water quality in Mill Creek. So it's, it's really exciting. I think, you know, the thing is Johnny Morris is a big conservationist and, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna help the situation.
Yeah, absolutely. We're very, very excited, let me tell you. Uh, okay, anybody else, uh, wanna add anything? Anybody have a question for any of those people? All right. Well, sorry to keep you so long. We had another issue that kind of went on.
Mayor, I'd just like to, I'd just like to say, um, this, uh, I really appreciate, we really appreciate talking to you again. And, uh, I just wanna thank John Chapman in particular for, uh, sticking with this team. If y'all don't realize, because of, uh, really this pandemic, uh, pandemics have a very negative effect on nonprofits. Nonprofits survive through young issues. Uh, the Nature Conservancy got hit hard in this pandemic, um, for, for those reasons, really. John is now his own private consultant, uh, running his own business. And John, please don't let me miss, I don't wanna misspeak, but, uh, John just switched gears and kept working with us. And he's such a good partner and, and he engaged Josh Allen. And, uh, uh, we just really appreciate that John's still involved with the project. Uh, he's, he's, he's doing that because he's really passionate about this project and, uh, thank you, John, for sticking with us.
Yeah, thank you, John, Sean, Darrell. Thank you all. Thank you, Wade.
Thank you, Mayor.
Back to you, Bill.
Uh, okay. Uh, the engine brakes ordinance is on its second reading. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to suspend the rules and place the engine brake ordinance, uh, on its, by final amendment?
Second.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, okay. We have a motion and a second by Joel. Uh, any discussion?
Again, I wanna point out that, as my understanding, you can't legislate, uh, anything that is a, a safety device. But given that we've changed it to a noise, we're going to have a noise ordinance, I'm in favor of this.
Okay, well, let's do a roll call, Jeff.
Linda DeWolff?
Yes.
Bill Moswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Combs?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Creeker?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes, and I'll say thanks again to Chris for bringing it to us.
An ordinance prohibiting the use of engine compression brakes within the city of Harrison, Arkansas that creates an intolerable noise level for the citizens of the city of Harrison.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, frankly, we beat this thing around in the ground and beat it up and...
How about it?
I'm, I'm all in favor of suspending the rules and placing this ordinance.
Get, get ready, Glenn.
On its third reading by title only.
I've been ready since four days of July.
Okay, we got a motion and a second by Wayne Combs. Any, uh, discussion? Roll call, Jeff.
Catch him off, Governor.
Bill Moswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Combs?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Creeker?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance prohibiting the use of engine compression brakes in the city of Harrison, Arkansas that creates an intolerable noise level for the citizens of the city of Harrison.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt. Roll call. Jeff?
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Combs?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Creeker?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolff?
Yes.
Bill Moswell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There we go.
All right, that baby is off of my paper. Congratulations again to you, Glenn. You got it?
All right, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd also like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and place the ordinance in regards to the dissolution of the Harrison Parks and Recreation Commission on the table on its first reading by title only.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second by Mitch Magnus? Any discussion on this? All right, roll call.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Combs?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Creeker?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolff?
Yes.
Bill Moswell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance prohibiting the Harrison Parks and Recreation Commission, creating parks and recreation departments, creating physician department, heading other provisions therein.
Okay.
And I believe we're going to wait till next month to do the second, third reading.
Well, yeah, give plenty of input out there in the community.
But I, once again, offer my deep appreciation for Mr. Melvin, Mr. King, Ms. Sevels, all the individuals, Tony Horton, that have served on that commission in the past.
Absolutely.
Too many to, uh, to name here.
Mitch Magnus.
Yeah, Mitch Magnus.
Like I said, I know what was in their hearts, so.
Yeah, you do.
Been a fantastic organization.
They brought us a long ways.
Yes, they did.
Fifty years, about that. Fifty, fifty-eight years, to be exact. Wow, wow.
And they're looking forward, I mean, they're forward thinking people the evolution needed to occur. And this is in the best interest of the people that use the programs.
We bet.
Yeah, I think they would all vote yes if they were here today. Our answer.
Mr. Mayor, last thing I have is a resolution that this will be, uh, more or less, this is bookkeeping process. And so I would go ahead and make the motion that we approve the resolution in regards to the certification of general tax villages for the city of Harrison for year 2020 by title only.
Second.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second by Heath. Any, uh, discussion? Jeff?
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Combs?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Creeker?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolff?
Yes.
Bill Moswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Looks like that's it for you, Bill?
Sir, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I wanna explain to y'all, Jeff, because of the guests we had here tonight, Jeff is somewhere in a closet. So he may, that's why he's not reacting like he normally does. Um, okay, we're coming down to, I guess, Joel? No? Nothing. Let's go to Mitch.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we've already discussed one of the items. It's a sales tax. Uh, I will bring up, uh, we had August financials, I want anybody needs to be reminded of it. We, we've discussed it actually for a number of, uh, meetings. Um, we're ahead on the budget, uh, budgeted deficit in general funds, four twenty-five and the current deficit, two twenty-three, so we're two hundred and two ahead. Uh, we are actually in surplus of all of the city funds, I believe. Yeah, we're in surplus of all the city funds at the current time, um, for the funds. Uh, we discussed the sales tax, uh, so the next thing is the budget. Uh, let Wade speak to some of those budget items. Um, overall, I think everything is, is looking well. I think they've got some good news in water. Uh, there's no insurance increase.
Good.
Uh, for health insurance, that's a positive. Uh, one of the possible carriers has removed themselves some consideration, they declined. I assume the city will be staying with municipal league, knows that.
That is the plan as of, as of right now.
Uh, any other budget comments?
No, I'm still working with Wade on getting all the infrastructure out there and water and sewer, as he mentioned. You know, the water and sewer, we're gonna take another look and, and see what we have to expend on, on those, or making sure that the creek is clear, um, and all the regulations that we have to take into consideration for that. So we will be working on that continuously. Wanted to mention again, you know, sales tax, we won't have that until around Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and that being said, I, I mentioned to Luke, I think we gotta not approve budget until we get sales tax numbers one more month. I think that is the prudent thing to do because we expect it to be good news, but should something happen and he wanna make some sort of adjustment, I don't wanna go back and hit the board twice.
I think from me watching this council in the past, you never approve budget before November anyways, so November's fine.
Not much else. Hopefully you guys have had a chance to look at some of the budgets by fund. Um, I try to get that to you. It's a little bit easier to read, I think. Um, and then I will get you a, a total one as well. But until we get water and sewer done, it's kind of a moot point, so that way you're not looking at, at stuff twice. Um, but, um, all that factor still applies. I did find out the one point three percent COLA is social security, so that's the number we have in there for all of our employees, um, aside from the fire department, which we have changed their grid, um, along with the parks department, their, their new hires or their temporary seasonal people will go to minimum wage, so that does increase.
Uh, I will point out, I prefer that Luke gives good news and then I'm a little bit, uh, more not conservative, but I don't like him giving the, the news of concern. I mentioned in committee that I am concerned about the, uh, water and sewer fund. And as I look at it, it's, over the last three years, it's a forty to forty-one percent decrease because of the deficits we've been running. Uh, that, I don't wanna be alarmist or anything, I just don't want to, when Luke gets these others prepared, we need to be very cognizant of our CPI increase and whether or not we need to increase water rates. Uh, we had the discussion during committee that Rogers had to go up twenty-four percent on their water rates. I don't wanna see that happen in Harrison two years from now or three years from now, so.
Yeah, Jeff, we won't go up twenty-four percent.
I just, I would just want it out there so that people don't say, hey, what's going on? So, I expressed my concern to Luke, looking at those reserves, we're no, it's not, not critical right now by any stretch of the imagination. We just need to make sure, if there's anything in the budget that is of concern to me, that would be it. Is that a fair comment?
Yes, and we'll continue to look, you know, several years down the road and, and we'll let you know kind of what our recommendations are, uh, whenever we bring the full budget. I think at that point in time, we'll have a good idea of what that CPI will be and, and if we can stick with that or if we need to recommend additional.
All right, thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
That's all out of finance.
Chris, I guess we're down to you and we took one of them.
Yes, we've already discussed the Game and Fish. Uh, no, we're looking for an approval for the, uh, CPO solar energy purchase option. And Wade, would you like to speak about that?
Um, I don't think I have anything else to add other than what we discussed at committee, but, uh, basically we just need council permission for the, uh, Mayor to enter into the agreement so that we can participate in that CPO B, CPO B program.
Take a motion for approval.
Second, okay.
Just a second, I would like to ask a question. Um, Mitch had mentioned at the last meeting that, uh, this is free money and, uh, we would be foolish not to take it. But I would like to ask the question, just so that it's voiced in public. Are there any strings attached to this free money?
Wade?
Well, it's, you know, the term free money, I guess, is just tied to the fact that they're savings. Um, there's no real strings attached, you know, the rates are not permanent. Um, you know, they would, just like any of their other rates, energy would have the ability to make proposals to the, uh, Public Utility Commission, um, but there's, there, no, there's no real strings attached. It's, it's a pretty simple, um, simple deal to where we're just participating in another type of rate structure that they have. It, it's similar to what we do, uh, with our peak shaving at some of our facilities. When we turn on generators, we go off-grid, you know. Those actually did have a string attached to that we have to maintain and operate generators. Uh, this one, there's really not much we have to do other than sign up and continue to purchase power from them, so.
And, and, um, I would not wanna speak for Energy or Mr. Martin, but my understanding is they don't give this rate structure to everyone. It's specific, um, whether you wanna say municipality, school districts, or, or whatever. I, I'm not sure who has offered this rate, but, but most people are not offered this rate.
They're not. This is primarily available to, to their, uh, public sector. At least that was the first offering, was to the public se- sector clients that they have out there. Um, you know, we had to put our name in the hat to be considered several months ago, um, obviously contingent on council approval when the time came, but, uh, yeah, it, it's not something that's available to a whole lot of people.
Is that good for us?
Good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, got that taken care of. Uh, Bob, before you come, do you mind if I do one thing? It'll just take a couple of minutes. You guys with Church One Eighty, I know you've been waiting a long time. We are going to present another Good Neighbor Award tonight. And if you all would come up, uh, we'll let you out of here if you wanted. Yeah, baby! We all needed a, that's good right there. And, uh, I'll tell you what, why don't you go ahead, I don't know if this works, introduce yourself and your partner.
Hi, I'm Charles LaVoy. This is Roy Shatwell and Cody Frickle, that's right. And we're from the Church One Eighty, right here. Seeker's House also, uh, you know, uh, we represent, uh, cleaning up Harrison, you know, and, uh, spiritually and, and physically, so we do our best. Uh, we, we love the Mayor and every time he asks for us to do something, we, we, we oblige 'cause we really love him. We love Harrison. Thank you.
You guys really do. This is so long overdue. But, uh, I, I can't tell you, I think you all know, some of the projects, you know, they're cleaning the, uh, goose droppings from the lake for two years.
That's right.
Uh, and the tonnage was unbelievable. They also, uh, power washed all the sidewalks at the square, so you all might not remember. And they also, uh, what we do just recently, well, you were out at the fairgrounds, helping with the fairgrounds.
That's right.
And, uh, there was another big project.
Hung up the lights and was like...
Hung up the lights last year. Now, I know that's coming up, so Matt may be calling on you again. But we'll leave that up to him. But seriously, every time we need help with a project, it, uh, you know, it's good for volunteers, these are the guys. They're, they're there, they're ready. Uh, it's a faith-based organization.
Absolutely.
And, uh, we just, I, I thank the world on, I wanna read you, "The city of Harrison is honored to bestow the Good Neighbor Award upon Church One Eighty in appreciation of forming the volunteer organization." Neighbors helping neighbors. Well, that's what it says, so, yeah. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I love you today, but you can also leave. I wouldn't stay, but let me leave, so.
Thank you all. We appreciate y'all. Thank you. Have a good. God bless you.
Bob Largin?
Jeff, put up the slide, please.
Next slide, Jeff. As we had agreed to, uh, that the chamber would come back as the Economic Development Organization for the city and the county, this is our mission. We said that we would come back and report to you on a quarterly basis on the economic development activity. Next slide. This is what we're gonna talk about tonight. Next slide. This is what we're gonna talk about tonight, next slide. Just a quick overview of what's happened this past quarter. I can't even read that.
Yes, I can read it.
I gave Mary G my copy. Sorry. We paused, uh, at the beginning of the second quarter, three major prime projects that total about thirty-five million dollars. We don't have those back on track yet, I'm not certain that we ever will. But, I'm very pleased to report that our industries have come back strong, many are seeking, uh, are, are seeing production increases, two in particular are exceeding their annual production requirements this month. It is just amazing the amount of work that has come back to our diversified industries. Investment continues to rise both for prime and Main Street businesses, we've had five-point-eight million dollars spent, uh, from January one through the end of September in our prime businesses, that's new equipment, that's new investments in building, that's additional people, we've got two and a half million forecast through the balance of this year. Main Street business is, is what's so exciting, five-point-eight million has been invested in Main Street businesses this year, and that's during COVID-19. Thirty-eight-point-one million is forecast ahead. Of that five-point-eight million, I just wanna go back to a comment that the Jonesboro Councilman made, uh, about the number of businesses that apparently closed there, uh, we've had one business in the city limits of Harrison that has closed as a result of COVID-19, one business only. And I think that speaks volumes for the ability of our people to come back, um, I, I really do, I've just gotta talk about that. The Main Street businesses are key, as you know, sixty to seventy percent of all the employees work for them. We've got a new Dunkin' Donuts coming to town, be open by June first, Planet Fitness, just talked to their, uh, district manager, they will be open before January first of 2021. Walmart is expanding their Vision Center to the tune of a little over a quarter of a million dollars. Um, I had mentioned earlier, uh, that one of the Flex Steel buildings, the small one, has closed, and it is a done deal, the, an announcement of its new purpose is awaiting a major franchise, uh, a major, uh, approval of a major name brand before they can, uh, move into that new location.
Would you say that again, Bob?
The small Flex Steel building.
Oh, the small?
Has been, has been sold.
Okay.
Uh, and the deal is closed.
Okay.
But, uh, the owner is awaiting on a major national brand's final approval. We, the other, uh, forty-one and a half acres, the big property south of town on 65, is in fact under contract, they're in the sixty-day due diligence, uh, that has tremendous potential, and I've gotta compliment Wade and Mark, uh, in working with the prospective owner of that new facility, uh, we've had two meetings with him, and, um, it's just a great opportunity, and we'll come back to the city with additional information.
So is that a done deal?
It, they're in their two-month period of due diligence, and they have the con, it's a real estate deal.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, but, I'd say it looks pretty, well, I, I need to let you know, and I think I've mentioned this to Jerry, we are competing against a suburb of Memphis, Tennessee.
That's what I was looking for, so we're still...
A suburb, we're still competing against, they have the same sixty days in Memphis, Tennessee, and I will tell you that one of the major things, and we have to deal with it, that property sits on the Mississippi River, which gives them ship access to the Gulf, eighty percent of all their product goes out by ship from the United States.
Wow.
But, but, we have other things in our favor, so we're, we're, we're continuing to work that, um, in fact, I just had a discussion with Wade today, so, we're, we're working very hard on that, uh, we're talking to the tune of ten million dollars and sixty-five employees. I wanna talk about the workforce, uh, fifty-five new jobs since January, uh, net new jobs, a hundred and fifty-nine are projected through the end of this year. A key point, Boone County is down to five-point-eight percent unemployment from a high of ten-point-seven in April. We are two points lower than the state average, and three points lower than the national average. What does this mean? Well, um, we had over estimate of a thousand people unemployed the middle of April, due to COVID, uh, whether it be restaurants, hospitality, pace shut down for two weeks before they declared bankruptcy, Wal-Bash Two, uh, took a three-week pause in production, over a thousand employees. We've made up those one thousand employees, and today, we're two hundred and fifty short. I know the chart says one-twenty-five, I was informed by one of our major industries today, they need forty employees today, today, they have that many openings available. We have come back and come back strong, and moving forward, we continue to work with the Arkansas Economic Development Commission and energy and some commercial real estate developers, um, it, it's a major step forward. Jeff, next slide. This are the unemployment figures, uh, as you see, we're at five-point-eight percent in Boone County the end of August, we lag thirty days behind the US and, I'm sorry, forty-five days behind the US figures, and about thirty days behind the state figures, but we're doing good. Job creation, the next chart, uh, this is a breakdown of where those employees went and where they're going. Notice the last number, Dunkin' Donuts, forty employees, ten to fifteen full-time, twenty-five to thirty part-time. That is an amazing number for a small facility, but, that's what this brings to our community, okay? Next slide, please. Prime business expansions totals five-point-eight, there are the individual, uh, projects as they have, uh, as, as they've been identified, and then new prospects are eleven-point-three. Next chart is the Main Street business expansions at two-point-nine million, and then the next chart is lengthy, but it's thirty-nine and a half million as we look ahead for these new, for the projects that have come about, that were brand-new as of January one, some projected into next year, an amazing number, which brings you to the next chart, that we're looking at over fifty-eight-point-three million in new dollar investment in our location today. That's pretty amazing, eleven-point-two million since June of this year, just in the third quarter. Uh, next chart is the residential construction permits, I get these from the city, from the fire department, nine homes totaling, uh, one-point-six million are under construction, uh, had ten remodels totaling about a quarter of a million, this does not take into account anything outside the city limits, we have no way to track that. Housing sales, um, there are a hundred and ninety-five current listings as of Sep-, as of October the first, that's down a hundred and twenty-five since January. We have realtors in the room who tell you the number is shrinking each and every day. Average list price was a little over two-hundred thousand, average sales price, uh, over a hundred and twenty-five thousand, commercial listings are a hundred and three, um, only four have sold, this does not count the Flex Steel building, the small Flex Steel building. Next chart is on agriculture, this is no update, uh, we won't get an update until next year after the census, these are twenty-seventeen figures, but I found it interesting to note that the Secretary of Agriculture, Wes Ward, stated just last week to the governor in a press conference, that Boone County continues to lead the state of Arkansas in livestock production for the seventy-five counties, the number-one livestock producer in the state of Arkansas.
Those of us.
It's amazing.
And we're hilly.
And we're hilly, compared to, that's right. So, with our next chart, I simply come before you today at the end of our, uh, third quarter, uh, respectfully requesting the additional ten thousand dollars for Q3, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions to Bob or Melissa?
Please.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm not sure a motion is even necessary, is it? Bill?
I don't think so, I think...
I don't think so, you got it.
Approved?
Yeah, you got it, it's already approved, so. Uh, we'll have that for you soon, Bob, uh, thank you and thank Melissa for all you're doing and, uh, standing out in the hall for an hour, we're pretty...
We've been sitting in your lounge chairs.
Well, your lounge. Uh, okay, so, with that said, let's go on to, we're near the end, um, I wanna share with you briefly, I've got a lot of things, but they're not necessary as much as this one, I think you all noticed our guests tonight, you probably know who they were, what they were doing, uh, but for those of you who don't, uh, that was the Martin Luther King Commission out of Little Rock, who's been big supporters of Harrison, Arkansas, dealing with racism. And, back in April, Bernice King, Dr. Bernice King, was supposed to be here in person, they delayed it till September, still couldn't happen, so they wanted to do a, uh, one-hour taping of a conversation with Dr. King, uh, myself and Lane, and it was gonna be moderated by the man over there that was, uh, DeShawn Scarborough, he's the executive director. So they've been up here most of the week, we've been trying to put the technical things together, Jeff and David have been tremendous help, because, you know, this building doesn't work well, and we had to, we first had him back in the back, uh, in the police conference room, which was nice, but wifi didn't work well, so, we had to jump through a lot of hoops, and then tonight, right as we're ready to go, Christine lets me know, we just went to generator at three o'clock, something like that, and it's supposed to shut off at five, but we were gonna go on right at five, and they were down to the second, and if that thing would've shut off, it probably would've shut us down just for a minute, but that was too long, so, uh, we worked that out, and, uh, it was, it was a great one-hour, you know, the respect for the King, uh, Commission and, uh, Dr. Bernice King, whatever it was, it's much greater tonight with me, because I learn about him constantly. And if you all would go back, and if you haven't really studied, uh, Martin Luther King Jr., and really what he stood for, oh, man, it's, uh, it's amazing. So, that's what they were doing here tonight, uh, the tape meeting is being sent to Atlanta, Atlanta is gonna edit, now that's where they take it and kinda make us look halfway good, so, at least me, the rest were terrific, and they're gonna send it back to him, and he'll get it up, uh, to all the medias, uh, you saw Fox out of Little Rock was here, and KY Three came down, and, uh, that sort of thing, so we did some stuff with them that'll be on ten o'clock, but, uh...
Are we gonna get to get home in time to see it?
I don't know. If you stop for a drink, you might not, but, uh, you might get there, yeah, you will, and, I know it's been a, I don't know, it's only eight oh six, which, to me, it feels a lot longer, this, this King thing has been, uh, it's been very stressful for the whole building here this whole week, so, but that's why I was...
That's the old good behavior.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I tried, I tried, sometimes it's hard.
Very brave.
One of the questions was, Mayor, why'd you make that post? So, you know, so, you know, the questions on the video, they weren't gotcha questions, but they, you know, we, we answered the tough questions along with the others, so...
Well, Mr. Mayor, what you did when we, when we recognized Ms. Kate Linsen at, the two individuals that Mr. had, had here this evening, they said this is the most hospitable town that, you know, they've been to, as we pointed out, that's who we are.
That's who we are.
And the best thing about that is those individuals were treated with respect and dignity, and, and their, their positions were considered in our community.
Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely.
This is the most welcoming, diverse, um, nurturing...
It really is.
Open community in the world.
Absolutely is, but I'm telling you, that video did us harm, and we're doing all we can, all we can do is all we can do.
Well, again, I would, I would tell you to the people that wrote that, I'll give the first fifty dollars, twenty dollars, whatever, if we wanna contact those individuals that wrote those stories about that video, they can come stay at my house for the weekend.
I know.
I'll climb down.
They'll feel different, I'll tell you, we had two men, uh, one of the guys today, he told me, once that video came out, he said, his phone started, uh, just going nuts, they were friends of his, this was a black man, and he said, they were, "Oh, my friends, get out of Harrison, get out, you gotta get out." What? I know, he said, "What?" So, unfortunately, it's out there, but people like him is letting everybody, and his mother is an attorney for FedEx Global, so that didn't hurt any, so, uh, it just, um, it's been a rough ride, but we're, uh, you know, we're getting through it, and, uh, this Martin Luther King thing, I think oughta be, uh, it oughta be wonderful, I hope so. The next question is, next month, uh, we have the, uh, Thanksgiving, and, uh, we need to plan our, I think our options are simple, we do one, no, we need to do two meetings. We need to do two meetings, so, if we can do our first meeting on schedule, the second meeting the week after, that would be, that would be...
Supplied by you.
Supplied by you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're good with that, uh, anything from the audience? Sir, you and Ben got anything, I know you've been taking a lot of notes tonight.
Do we not have to vote on moving the date?
It's, you, you need to vote on the November yet?
God is telling me yes. Okay, uh, I need a motion.
A motion to move the meetings.
Uh, she made a motion, Joel seconded it, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, sir, back to you, anything? Okay, good, uh, with that said, let's, uh, Mary Jean?
Let's go home.
Okay, all in favor, thank you, thank you all very much.
And don't forget to go and vote. Be good. No change in my mind.
You okay? You gonna grab him, Chris, is that what you're coming for?
Right ahead.
I am so sorry.